...of you who are watching this meeting on City 7 to the January 8th meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the independent city council on matters related to zoning and land use changes within our city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in code and policies that relate to city planning. Our procedure for each case is as follows. First, the main applicant will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case, followed by anyone else in attendance that wishes to speak in favor of that matter. Second, those who are in opposition or who have questions regarding the case will be recognized to speak. Then, if there was opposition or questions from the public, the applicant will be allowed a little rebuttal period to address those concerns and answer the questions. And once the applicant is finished, the Chair will declare the public hearing portion of the case closed, and further comment from the public will not be recognized. At this point, the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss the merits of the case with one another, and during this discussion, the commission reserves the right to ask questions of all parties concerned. And then finally, we will render decision on the case. Because this is the only public hearing of the cases on the agenda tonight, all those who wish to speak will be heard. All comments and questions should be addressed to the Chair and not directly to the applicant or to the staff. The Chair also requests that statements be kept brief and on point. Please do not ramble. State your case concisely. If a statement has already been made by a previous speaker, you are welcome to stand and voice your agreement with that speaker and simply indicate your agreement on the matter. So now to expedite tonight's meeting, the Chair asks that everyone who wishes to testify or believes that they might testify, stand now and be sworn in. You can't talk up there, unless you just stand. Those standing, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. President.
In order of cases to be heard, I move that we take case number 19-810-01. Move it from number one to be the third case to be heard.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any...
I second.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Wiley.
Oh, Bush.
Yes. And unless there's any discussion among the commission members, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Wait. Wait, wait, wait. Let him vote. We're gonna vote.
Oh, okay.
You can speak.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldsberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number 19810-01 is moved to the third position in the agenda, and this is because we're gonna be kind here tonight and let these other folks who won't take us long have their, have their little, have their few minutes of the sun, and then they can go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, Billy.
We have a full house.
Yes, we do.
So that we may hear as many citizens as possible. I move that we limit presentations to three minutes, and if you so choose, then you may expand it to five.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Eighteen a second. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldsberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Motion's been adopted. Okay. First case today is case number 19-200-01, special use permit for 3701 South Nolan Road. Staff, please give us a presentation.
Yes. M&amp;G 7719 LLC in conjunction with Avis Rent-A-Car request approval of a special use permit to operate a vehicle rental business at 3701 South Nolan Road. The vicinity map on the screen shows the general location on the site, which is on the southeast corner of Nolan Road and East 37th Street. This is a zoning map for the area. The subject property is on C2 General Commercial, as are the properties to the north, south, and west. Single-family homes to the east are zoned R6 Single Family Residential, and that's the yellow to the right, on the right side of the screen. This aerial photo shows the site in the red circle oval. The property adjoining this property to the south contains smaller strip centers. On the west side of Nolan, there are a couple financial institutions and a self-service tunnel car wash. On the north side of 37th Street is a tire service business, and to the west, excuse me, to the east, which is on the right, are single-family homes. Facing Nolan Road, this is the western elevation of the building, which most recently was used for an insurance office. It's an all-brick structure featuring two drive-through bays in the middle of the building. Here, we're looking at the building's south elevation.
You, if you need to talk, you need to go outside. Thank you.
Okay. Here, here we're looking at the rear portion of the property and the roughly ten feet, ten-foot retaining wall and fence, which topographically separates this property from the residential property to the east. And then this is the back of the building, again, with the two garage door bays in the middle of the building. To the south of the property are two small strip centers, which contain an assortment of retail and office uses. Here, we're looking south down Nolan Road. 39th Street is off in the distance. Across Nolan Road to the west are the, this is another bank, financial institution, I think it might be a savings loan. And to the north, we have the self-service car wash and another bank. And then directly north of this site is the Firestone Tire Service Center. A staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. The existing parking surface must be restriped with the proper ADA signage and markings added. Only one ADA space is required. Landscaping in accordance with the city code requirements shall be added along East 37th Street. And then in conjunction with the Nolan now revitalization plan, make the following improvements to the building. On the front elevation, replace the faded vinyl awting over the garage door and person doors, portion of the wall within metal or other permanent material canopy. And then on the south elevation, architectural enhancements such as a real or faux window to break up the brick wall expanse. And then all the improvements shall be completed prior to this, to a city business license being added for the business, being approved for the business.
Is the applicant here? Sir, when you're up there, please state your name and address for the record, and make sure you pull the microphone down so you're speaking directly into it.
Hi, I'm Tom Clemmons with Area Surveyors. I represent the owner of the property, applying for the special use permit. This is just piece of property that Avis Rent-A-Car is wanting to use for rent cars. And it, you know, they're not going to really do too much to it, some of the, you know, the improvements that the city's requesting. And I think there's one wall, interior wall, that they're gonna move over a few feet that I think they have plans already submitted for that. And that's about all there is. We have representative of Avis here and the owner, if they, if you have any questions for them, so.
I know it's pretty straightforward, but I did wanna make sure that the owner was okay with all and was going to comply with all the staff recommendations that were listed.
Yes, yes, he is.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I may have missed it, but I don't see a discussion of parking. It was previously an insurance office, therefore you did not have the inventory of automobiles nor the number of customers that may be in attendance at one time. So bring us up to speed on how you intend it, inventory.
They're thinking there'd be probably like six to eight cars at the most at a time there, that most of them are out, and so there'll just be constant turnover. And so there's plenty of adequate parking on that size lot for...
Assuming six to eight.
Right.
And if you should have spillover, where do you park? What is your maximum accommodations for vehicles that are in inventory and customers?
In other words, how many parking spaces do you have?
Oh, uh...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably eighteen, I think you could probably get eighteen on there. That's what I'm, what I'm guessing, something like that. They're not striped or anything right now, but...
Therefore, parking should not be a issue.
No, no.
Uh, excuse me, one minute. What do you think, Stuart? Are there eighteen's...
Uh, if you include the inside of the two parking bays, which would have one car in each bay, realistically, for vehicles to get around the site, maybe twelve, ten, something like that, which is fine for an office, but you have employees, customers, and then parking, you know, car vehicles, so it could get a little tight there with this, with this, in this situation.
Then how do you manage the, let's assume for a moment, there is a spillover, substantial spillover. How do you accommodate that?
And because you're speaking, make sure you state your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Brad Dubish, District Manager for Avis Rent-A-Car, based out of 723 London Drive, Kansas City, Missouri, at the airport. We, independent, an independent contractor runs this location, so we don't have four or five employees like a typical rent-a-car location would have. We'll have one operator. He may have one or two part-time employees. From the standpoint of spillover parking, we monitor each and every location that we have in the Kansas City metro. We've got twelve stores similar to this in the metro. We've got the ability to transfer, move fleet out accordingly as well, if necessary. So whatever the allotted number of spaces that we have, whether it be twelve, whether it be fifteen, we'll make sure that we adhere to that parking. And again, if we have situations where we're sitting on additional fleet, we'll certainly make sure we move that to an alternate location, probably back to the airport property.
My concern is to ensure that you're a good neighbor.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And like I said, we've got properties all throughout the metro, so we're always very conscious of our neighbors and making sure that we adhere to the parking that's allotted to us. So I guarantee you that we will.
Are there any other questions from the commission members? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. You may be seated. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this case? Okay. Is there anyone here who is opposed or who has questions? All right. Seeing no movement in the throng here, we'll say the public hearing portion is closed and am willing to entertain questions or motions.
I make a motion that case number 19-200-01, the special use permit for 3701 South Nolan Road, with conditions, be approved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldsberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
Yes. Case number 19-200-01, special use permit for 3701 South Nolan Road has been approved. Good luck to you, gentlemen. Our next case is case number 19 dash, excuse me, just give me a second. 19-100-01 rezoning of 16200 East US 24 Highway. Staff, give us a report, please.
Ronson Machine and Manufacturing requests to rezone 12.27 acres of property at 16200 East US 24 Highway from C2 General Commercial to C3 Service Commercial for the purpose of relocating a custom sheet metal parts fabrication, sorry, for the purpose of relocating a custom sheet metals part fabrication operation to a location from three existing locations in the city. From the vicinity map, you can see we're talking about the old Kmart site located northeast of the intersection of US Highway 40 and M291. As you can see, it's in, it's along a, in...
We are having a little trouble hearing.
What was the location?
It's not 24, 24, it's 24 Highway. Did I? Okay. US 24 Highway and M291, the northeast corner quadrant of that interchange. The old Kmart location is along a commercial corridor. The property to the north is zoned R6, although undeveloped wooded area. We have a, our, we have a C3 Service Commercial to the east, area of a proposed self-storage facility. And then closer down to 24, we have the different strip centers and restaurants that line that corridor with apartment communities just a little bit farther to the east. The applicant intends to close on the property within the next hundred days or so. The intended renovation of this old box store is to be begun quickly so they can move equipment there from their existing facilities by this fall. Here's the aerial that shows a little bit clearer picture of what the actual area is there. The building's renovation will not only include interior, but also exterior renovations to the building and the parking lot. Improvements will include elimination of the big retail window panes, obviously, the creation of new building accesses. They'll have to install some new utility service lines, of course, add new landscaping to this large parking lot surface, and provide some buffering potentially along the rear of the property. There, I wanna clarify one thing from your report. I said there's a, there was a tenant space currently occupied by a financial services company. My understanding is rather than relocate, they may actually be leaving the property altogether, and I think the applicant can clarify that when he gets up here. Depending upon the value of improvements made, landscaping and screening will be required. The UDO calls for a 15-foot buffer along the north of the property. In addition, plantings would be needed strategically throughout the parking lot as well as along the rights-of-way areas along the edges of the property. Lastly, the property has two outlots, one containing a vacant bank building and then a former restaurant pad site that, restaurant since, has been leveled. Those properties are not part of this rezoning, but would remain the C2 General Commercial that they currently are. This right here is the 185-foot notification zone around the property. And real quickly, I'll give you a tour of the neighborhood and the property. It's our photography here. This is looking northwest along the south side of the existing Kmart structure that's been unoccupied for at least six months now. This is the other end looking east, the strip center that, appendage that comes off the east to the big box store. And this is the very end of unit there. This is the old restaurant pad site. We're looking toward 291 to the west. Here's the other pad site at the southwest side of the property, former bank building. Standing here on 24 Highway, looking southwest, across the street, the McDonald's, and then a large vacant property that Hawthorne wraps around on the, on the south and on the east. And then this is looking on up 24 Highway to the east. And the apartments that lie off in the distance, the proposed self-storage facilities would be in between where we are and, or where the cameraman is and, and these apartments there. This is the northeast corner of the property, giving you an idea of the wooded nature of what's up on the north. You can see a little bit more of that to the right on this picture and the rear side of the building and how much separation there is along the back. And this is the northwest side of the building. And how the distance off of 24 Highway there, looking at the, at the whole of the structure. So this completes my report, and staff recommends approval on the zoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Does commissioners have any questions of Brian? Okay. Who's the applicant here? Just make sure you remember to state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the microphone, please.
All right. Kyle Carver from Ronson, 3000 South Jackson Drive. Just wanted to give you a brief synopsis of Ronson. We're a first-tier supplier of fabricated metal parts. We service handicap mobility, construction equipment, outdoor equipment, many others. Founded in the late 70s, under current ownership since 1989, we're roughly three times the size we were in 1989. Have a 5% average employment growth rate since 2012, and we currently employ about 80 to 90 people over two shifts. Our original location on Jackson is 30,000 square foot. We outgrew that in around 1999. We began to rent space in the caves off 291 to the total of about 90,000 square foot. So all told, we're about 120,000 square. We're at a crossroads, and we desire to be under one roof. We need to keep pace in a competitive market. We realized a need for a revitalization of the Kmart campus and thought we could come up with a win-win. Taking my cues from seeing comments and questions about the Kmart campus in general, we talked about, I've heard renovations. We're now discovering some of those. We know that the building obviously requires exterior work, power wash, paint, our signs, lighting. I don't know the extent of all that renovation yet. We're just discovering that. Noise and environmental concerns, I've heard some of that as well. I wanted to address that. Sheet metal has changed a great deal over the years. We use lasers as our primary method of cutting. It's not loud. Used to be metal punching and stamping was the technology. Welding and grinding are our primary sources of noise, but do not meet the time-weighted average requiring hearing protection, even inside our own facility. We do provide hearing protection. We use no chemicals or flammables in our process. We produce no chemicals, no fumes, no wastewater concerns, period. All materials are sent to be recycled. Skids and other interim-use items will be stored either inside or out of sight in the rear of the building. Traffic was a concern. We do shift work. Many people will be entering and leaving at non-peak times, either early in the morning or mid-afternoon. We do receive box trucks and tractor-trailers on occasion, seven to 10 box trucks a day, maybe one tractor-trailer a day. We will be asking them to use the outer road. In conclusion, my part, manufacturing is a good hard producer. We support local schools, local state and federal economies. We use American labor to produce American products. It is our hope to stay in independence for a win-win utilizing a Kmart blighted area, serving the needs of both community as well as Ronson.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Are there any questions of the applicant? Is any other one of your folks wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Howard Levy. I'm with EBR Independence, the owner of the Kmart building and the ancillary spaces. Just wanted everyone to know that we reached out to a number of retailers to see if they had any interest in replacing Kmart. And we did this, quite frankly, prior to Kmart closing in March of this year, March of 2018. We all knew the Kmart story, that at some point in time, given the demise of Sears and Kmart, that at some point in time, this box would come onto the market, Kmart would close their store. They reported sales over the years. Under their lease, they had an overage provision where they were required to report sales. And at one point in time, probably back in the late 80s, early 90s, that store was doing $22 million. $22 million. The latest sales report was a little bit north of $7.5 million. So 67% off in sales, and obviously, this is not particular to this store, but it pretty much permeated the entire Kmart and Sears store base, which is the reason that they filed Chapter 11 and possibly on the road to liquidation. But that's a story for another day. Who did we contact along the way to see who we could replace Kmart with? And I'm just going to go real quickly. If you want to know who these companies are more specifically, feel free to stop me. But a lot of the names you will probably know.
Just real briefly, please.
Okay. Three minutes, right? Okay, here we go. At Home, Barnes &amp; Noble, Bass Pro Shops, Best Buy, BJ's, Bloomingdale's, Cabela's, Christmas Tree Shops, Costco, Dick's, Dillard's, Dunham's, Fleet &amp; Farm, Florin Decor, Forever 21, Hobby Lobby, JCPenney, Kohl's, Macy's, Nordstrom's, Rural King, ShopCo, Target, Associated Wholesale Grocers, to include Price Chopper, Apple Market, Hen House, Sunfresh Markets, Hy-Vee, Walmart, Sam's Club, Lowe's, Home Depot, Orchardland Farm &amp; Home, Tractor Supply, Big Lots, Menards, and Burlington Stores. That's on the retail side. We did the same thing with hotels. You don't want to hear the 15 or 20 names half for hotels. Same way with theaters. Long and short is, we went through the universe of tenants, myself, along with NAI Heartland, who has done repositioning and closed stores for a number of big-box retailers, to include Walmart, Best Buy, Toys R Us, Office Depot, Office Max. The long and short, I think you got the message, you certainly understand, we canvassed the entire universe of tenants, no offers came forth, and that's why we quite frankly reached out to Ronson, and we think they're going to be a great use to revitalize 24 and 291.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, but my name is Doug Goodwin, better known as Joy Goodwin's husband. And I guess Kyle covered it very well, so I'm going to talk about what Mr. Preston said about being a good neighbor. I've worked with Ronson for 11 years, and that's important to me. It's important to Ronson. We're involved in the community. Personally, I'm on the Eastern Jackson County Workforce Development Board. I work with Mayor. We're in the work-ready communities. Work with Marty, Monty Short, and Inglewood Redevelopment for housing there. We're just many, many things. We have many, many needs for our people, transportation, jobs, loans, you know, very involved in the community. So that's going to expand to this area. So we're not just concerned about us and making the lowest-priced product and being the most efficient, effective we can be, but we're involved in the community, and it's fun. It really is fun to increase the, well, let's say, the low-income average that we have to the standards that we want. So I, I hope we qualify as a good neighbor. I think we have a very good reputation. I'm proud to work for Ronson.
Thank you. Does Commissioner have any questions of any of these gentlemen here?
You have 80 people now that will be moving with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be hiring any new people?
We, we entertain sustainable growth. We put on two new jobs already this year. We had seven last year and five the previous year, so yes, ma'am, we, we look for growth in every opportunity we can get.
Thank you.
And I do have a question. They mentioned, you know, doing improvements to the outside landscaping, things like that. Are you, are you amenable to doing that as well?
We have a budget we have to live within, but we will certainly entertain the requirements of the, of the city and beautification as needed.
Well, I appreciate that, sir. I'm not sure how important a north buffer zone is to that building, but it would be nice to see a few things out in front of the building.
Sure.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this case? Okay. Is there anyone here who is opposed or who has questions? State your name and address for the record, please.
Chris McCurry, 16300 East 24 Highway. I'm the president of United Consumers Credit Union. I have no personal beef against Ronson, other than we have the building that's there, you know. My concern is taking it from C2 to C3 will further reduce the value of that building. And obviously, I represent, I know they represent a lot of people, I represent 17,000 members of my credit union, so that's my main concern there is, you know, we would, you know, it may make a tough situation tougher, so pretty much I'm done, unless you got a question.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
No questions? Okay, well, thank you, Chris.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You represent a credit union?
Yes.
Have you considered doing a, reaching out to Ronson and perhaps partnering with them?
We actually chatted a little bit the other day.
They got 90 employees and...
The problem we have right now is we're about $420,000 into that building. My assumption is that's probably a little more than they want to pay, and it's probably, comes to a point in time, what they want to pay is probably...
So at this point, you have no intentions of reopening, continuing that operation there?
The issue with that location is we could never get a light that corner. We, you know, the members are absolutely livid trying to go left there. I mean, 5 o'clock, good luck. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris. Was there another gentleman that had? Yes, sir, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record when you get there. And if, if folks could please turn off their phones, put them on silent and respect the, at least you respect me, I'd like to hear the person talking to me. Yes, sir.
My name is David Vogel. I live at 403 West Colonel Drive.
Okay, what's your concern, sir?
I have a question about utility improvements were mentioned on that property. I have a question about what they are.
I want you to go ahead and state your question, and then we'll make sure they answer it.
What are the utility improvements that are being planned for that property?
Okay. All right. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Or is that it? Okay, we'll bring them back up here and we'll find out, okay? Thank you, sir. Are there any other folks with questions or would like to speak against this case? When you get up there, make sure you pull the microphone down so that we can hear you. Nothing wrong with being short.
That's true.
And I need your name and address, please.
My name is Wathahartzak. I live at 18519 East Blackhawk Trail, Independence, 64056.
Okay.
So as you can probably assume, I live not too far from that Kmart area, just east of there. And I know what horrendous traffic that is, especially during rush hour. And I don't see how that's not going to create it worse than what it already is. I just, that's my question, traffic. I mean, it's, there's accidents there, and I know what the, the bank, I used to bank there, actually. You try to come out of there going the wrong direction, and you're not going to get out.
Okay. Well, that's probably more of a question of city staff, but we'll make sure we ask them, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Just make sure we speak directly to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Rita Dodd. I live at 510 West 39th Street North in DePence, Missouri, 64050. I agree with her on the traffic issue. The other question I had was about the noise. Those are families living in Hawthorne right there. Traffic's going to be, as he said, shift work. There's little children trying to sleep. There's parents that are trying to sleep to go to work the next day. I just wondered what they were going to do about the sound barrier with the traffic and them working and the trucks coming in and out. It will be a lot of noise.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who has questions or concerns? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing portion closed. Would the applicant please come back up and answer the questions, if they would? The first question was about utilities.
I know Mr. Harker mentioned some utility improvements. I'm not sure what they are myself. Did you not mention some?
I, I know that it's just, I would, I didn't, from the meeting that we had when the departments were there, I, there, there was some discussion, I know, about water lines and adding additional fire hydrants, and, and then there was the whole private sewer and...
Right.
And grinder issue.
We've had some extensive talks with the fire department, and they are going to require one additional fire hydrant. And we're just learning what, what other things might go along with the requirement of the additional fire hydrant. Electricity, we need to increase some, some electricity requirements, some amps. The sewer is something where the system is, is private, and we're just learning what we're going to have to go through to fix that, or what if, if there's a problem with it, we don't even know if there's a problem yet. Those are to be discovered.
Okay.
Did I hear you correct, say, one additional fire hydrant would be added?
Yes, sir.
Staff indicates eight additional fire hydrants would be added.
There, there was...
Or would be, would be needed.
I needed to make a correction in my report. It was, the latest I heard was two. I don't know where we went down the...
So we are going to sprinkle the rest of the building, that's our intent, is to sprinkle the rest of the building, which reduces the, the need for hydrants from the eight to, and we did the math, now from two to one. And that, again, is, is straight from George Kirby.
But that's a matter of compliance with the local regulations, so I don't think that's going to become a factor.
Right.
It's just a matter of compliance.
Right.
It's two, one additional. We are, there's already one there.
Okay. All right, the second question was about the traffic, and I'm not sure that's, you'd probably love a stoplight there, and certain times I'm not sure, but that's probably more of a question of staff, so I'll ask you about the third question, which was noise. And I did listen to you, and you said there was less noise. I think she's a little more concerned about the trucks and the traffic. Maybe you could just speak to that.
It's our intent to place the loudest operations in the northwest corner of the building, which would include the loading and unloading of the majority of our shipping and receiving. We don't sense that there's going to be a lot of noise produced, any beyond, yeah, I just, I just don't see it.
Okay.
We are currently close to a residential area. Much closer than Hawthorne, okay? And we've had no trouble in 10, 11 years I've been there. So we do feel like we're, we're quiet neighbors.
Okay. As long as we got you gentlemen up here, any questions from Commission again for these All right, thank you. And I'd like to ask staff to address the traffic flow, possibility of a light. Well, look who's here.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Make sure you state your name.
Yes, Katie Horner. I am the city engineer and acting traffic engineer. As the applicant stated, they have 80 to 90 employees, which 24 Highway experiences tens of thousands of vehicles per day, which translates to a very minimal increase in traffic at this location. So we, we do not have any concerns. 24 Highway is under the governance of MoDOT, so any additional increases would be under their purview, but given that this amount of traffic probably wouldn't even compare to the Kmart traffic, we're not, we're not overly concerned about the increase that would be experienced.
I heard you correctly say you anticipate the traffic flow to be less than the retail Kmart operation, even at the $7 million level versus 22 million?
Yeah, I mean, if Kmart had less than 90 people coming in, I would think they would have closed a lo, long time ago. So, but yes, there, there would probably be much less. Now, there will be more people at one time coming in and out, but still, that 90, or we'll say, let's say, half and half, 45 and 45 at, at a shift, I mean, that still doesn't, doesn't even compare to the tens of thousands of vehicles per day that, that do go up and down 24 Highway.
Is it possible that this applicant could use the outer road? And would that alleviate some of the stresses on 24, but it still have to access 24?
That's something that we can work through, through the plan development process, absolutely. It, it really just kind of depends on where the people are going and how they're getting in and out, so.
He had actually said they planned to use the outer road for the trucks and such, so that should help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, unless there are any more questions or comments, I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion. That case number 19-100-01, rezoning of 16200 East US 24 Highway, be approved with any improvements necessary.
Second.
Second. I think Virginia beat, I think Virginia had it.
Yes.
Commissioner Goldsberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman Ashbaugh.
Yes. Case number 19-100-01, rezoning of 16200 East US 24 Highway has been approved. Good luck to you, gentlemen. Hope everything works out, it'd be great.
Thank you.
All right. What everybody's been waiting for. Case number 19-200, no, I'm sorry. Case 19-810-01, PUD preliminary development plan, 3206 North Spring Street. Can I have the staff report, please?
Okay. Sean Canton Architectural Design requests approval of a preliminary development plan and plat for plan unit development on 2.54 acres to be located at 3206 North Spring Street. So the vicinity map here, okay, get closer. The, the vicinity map shows this in the interior of the Kentucky Hills subdivision, about a block and a half off of Liberty to the west, just north of Colonel Drive, between Pleasant Street and Spring Street. So you can see here from our zoning map, it's an area that's zoned R30 PUD, been zoned, in fact, R30 or high-density residential equivalent since 1965. But it's an area that's entirely R6, single-family residential zoning within the interior of Again, you can see the existing green space, the old community. Again, you can see the existing green space, the old community, church, daycare, I think it's had a number of iterations over the years on that property, and the green space around it, and the large parking area up on the hill to the north of it. This is a picture of the preliminary plat. The, let's go back here for a second. The replatted track of Kentucky Place would be a subdivision of seven lots with seven structures. One, which would be a, the plan is for a variety of different structures. The one lot would have a duplex, a fourplex, they contemplate four, sixplexes and then eightplex. And these are sort of some elevations of what those, here's the elevations of what those iterations look like. And this is a tree survey of the existing landscaping that's currently in the vicinity. Their plan incorporates that into their landscaping plan that they provided in their, in their submittal. And so, real quickly, I'll go through the, the photographs here, and then, this is looking southeast at, from the northwest side of the building, we're on, I believe Pleasant, now looking to the southeast. And then this is looking down Pleasant, you can see the single-family residences that lie to the west along Pleasant here. That's Colonel Drive that is on along the south. And so, this is looking back up Colonel Drive, back to the west towards Sugar Creek, and then looking directly onto the property due north. And this is looking down toward the Liberty entrance to the property. Here's the intersection with Spring Street. And then this is the rear of the property, access off Spring Street, and the parking lot that lies to the north. And here's another view. Staff recommends denial of this preliminary development plan. For the following reasons. Number one, residential infill development standards of section fourteen-five-oh-five-zero-six intended to encourage infill development that is compatible with the physical character of a neighborhood in which a property is located would not be met by this plan. Number two, section fourteen-five-oh-one-ten-B requires that no more than forty percent of a front yard area in that our district may be paved or used for vehicle use. Three, the design and orientation of the project will create a traffic flow and parking problem along North Pleasant Street and Spring Street. Four, the old storm and sanitary systems in place in the area are operating near their limits. Number five, the plat needs detention tracks separate from the individually-owned lots planned for each residential structure. Number six, the plan should include a high-density landscape buffer and screen at the northern edge of the project and more landscaping to the interior of the property. Number seven, the applicant has not provided covenants or some indications or provisions for the maintenance of these individual lots or the common track that would be needed for detention basin. And it's not on the report, but I also wanna mention that the property does not meet the review criteria that's in your report, those review criteria items that was, were stated there.
And that's the end of your report? Okay. Commissioners have any questions of the staff? Okay, would the applicant please come forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name's Ryan Raider, the address is thirty-two oh-six North Spring Street. I represent the owner and investors and the builder on this property. So, I guess the story starts out, this property was purchased from a, from a bank, it was in default. It was a church or a Sunday school, I believe. And the bank didn't want to foreclose on it, they wanted to let them save face, so they deeded it over to Isosolease, so they didn't have to foreclose on it, because the, I don't know, funds were being disappropriated with the church. And, we'll see, our company tried for, I believe around two years or so, to re-lease it to another church or a daycare or Sunday school, had no luck. You know, fixed, it did have a flooded basement, but that was just a sump pump issue and that was fixed. So, after enough time went by, we decided to, you know, redo our strategy and develop this thing out. You know, one of the allure to purchasing the property was that, you know, it was, had versatile zoning, and there was a lot of things that could be done with it, yeah.
Just make sure you speak right into the microphone, for some reason it's not picking you up.
Okay. So, let's see here. So, I guess that takes us, you know, when we designed the development, it takes us to the, the first number under your recommendations, which was the physical character doesn't match. And I'd like to point out that the two lots, which are also zoned R-thirty, I believe, to the north, are two-story units. And I feel like, you know, the design is more modern than the rest of the neighborhood, but it matches, you know, the proposed elevation we have pretty well. I don't know if there's any pictures of that, but also, we picked that design because it's a very popular design. We built it in Raymore and Lee Summit and some other places I'm probably not thinking of. It attracts, you know, a, you know, a good, a good resident, a good working resident. They sell for around, you know, a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen thousand if you sell them off individually. If you rent them, they go anywhere from probably about a thousand to twelve hundred bucks a month. So, that's the reason we picked that design, if we consider doing a single-story design, but we thought that it would attract a, you know, a lower, possibly a lower-income resident, and we just didn't wanna go that route. It's cheaper to go with a single-story, but I feel like the two-story units are very popular, and it's a good, it's a really good plan. Let's see here. Second, on no more than forty percent of the front yard area for the driveway, I respectfully disagree, I think that's more of a single-family rule, but we do have an alternate plan that shows that criteria met. And I don't know if you wanna show that to them, Sean? Uh, let's see here. Okay, so, number three, on the design orientation, the project will create a crap, a traffic flow problem. I haven't seen any of that information yet, but I've thought of something that could solve that, which would be, you could easily put no overnight parking on the, on that, on those streets.
Let's-
I guess I haven't been there at night.
Folks, folks, let's, let's let him speak, okay? Everybody gets a chance to speak.
I, I know that that's-
I guess you have to, you almost have to pretend like that's your girlfriend or something, you gotta get right up next to it.
Not my girlfriend. Okay, so, I know in, in, in other complexes like this, they do have a no parking overnight rule. If that doesn't work in your neighborhood, that's fine. It's a solution, you know?
Okay.
The old storm and sanitary sewer systems in place, operating near their limits. We met with city staff, I don't know, five or six months ago, and that wasn't a concern then. You know, we left that meeting with, let's do this, and that's, you know, we've spent, you know, a considerable amount of money moving forward. Uh, let's see here.
At which point was that, which number was that, that you just mentioned, four?
Four, with the sanitary and the storm sewer.
Alright, okay, continue, please.
Okay. Okay, the detention, also, I haven't seen anything on the detention, nothing was brought to our attention in the initial meeting, but we also have an alternate plan that shows some detention on there, but we have no idea how much. There's not a lot of direction there. Let's see here. The plan should include a high-density landscape buffer to the northern edge. Once again, we'd be more than willing to do that, but it's also R-thirty to the north of this property, so we, you know, don't really understand why that's being required. Number seven, we didn't provide covenants or restrictions for the property yet, because, you know, taking a considerable risk here, you know, nobody's really done a project like this in this type of area, and we don't know which way it will go. We wanted to set it up with these, you know, condo-style townhomes to, you know, so we had a, we had different versatility where we could rent them or we could sell them to a, you know, as a single-family residence. And if they do go single-family residence, if we feel like that's what the market's gonna bring, then we will write up an HOA and, and put one in place.
Okay. Alright, are there any, was that, is that all you have?
I can go through the other five if you wanna hear what I gotta say.
Well, you can, if you, you're welcome to if you want, I'm not trying to rush you, I'm just trying to, there was a pause there.
I think that's all I've got, you know? I, I think that it's a real nice plan, and I think that, you know, making it single-story or making it smaller or turning inside-out would actually, you know, make it a less attractive, make it a less attractive project.
Okay. And, I apologize, but could you clarify again, who, who are you representing, the owner?
That'd be Isosolease Properties, yeah.
And that's, that's the folks who own the property, alright.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, are there any questions from commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
When you considered this project in your feasibility study, did you survey the area and the residents in that area to see what would fly and what would not fly?
We did not, no.
Why didn't you?
You know, I honestly, I, I, it never thought, it never thought that they would really, you know, that there would be a concern with putting in, you know, more single-family, and it wasn't required.
Well, you, you keep saying-
It's single-family attached.
Did you know that you would go through a process, this preliminary development plan would be reviewed? Did you consider that?
Yeah.
You didn't consider, in your feasibility study, getting feedback from the residents in the area?
I mean, that's what, that's what we're doing now, right?
Yeah, it appears so, yes. So, let me just hold on a second. Staff, is it, is it single-family attached? It doesn't appear to me to be.
It wouldn't be unless it was properly platted to be such. They were, they were planning on doing, from what their plans are here on the preliminary, it looks like each structure would be on a separate lot.
So, we wanted the option, and it would be, we would zone that out later. So, you first, you start out zoning it like this, like a multifamily, and then when you decide to sell them, you zone those, you zone those individual units, and then you can sell them off individually.
But if we zone it multifamily, you could build apartments there.
Excuse me, ma'am, Sean Caton with Caton Architectural Design. I live at sixty-three-twenty Marion Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. The property is not being requested to be rezoned. We did the plan based off of the zoning of the property, and we sat and met with staff, showed them two different density plans. So, as far as feasibility, we looked at what was the maximum allowed density on the property based on its zoning, and then we did a plan that was half that. And we showed both of those to staff planning, and then we went forward with the plan that was half the allowed density.
Are there any other questions?
When your company did this, did they consider the space limitation on this area?
What do you mean by space limitation?
Well, it's not a very large area, and they already have traffic. I just wondered if they took that into consideration.
The, all zoning ordinances were followed based on-
Just in that immediate area. Two-block area.
Did you get your question answered? Really, it's fine. Okay. Are there any more questions from the commissions?
I would like to add, this is, I don't know if I mentioned it before, this is also in a, in, in, you know, in addition to already being zoned R-thirty before we went after this, it did get designated as a federal opportunity zone. And if you aren't familiar with that, those are little areas across the United States that apparently were picked out by local politicians where they're wanting money and development put into this area. And if you're not familiar with it, you know, look it up, but, you know, it was designated that after, after we started this project, but, you know, it was another bonus for us.
Which politician?
I, I, I don't have, they didn't put out that information, but I think it was, they said it was state and local politicians designated the areas.
I see.
In the whole north, this neighborhood.
Just that general area, not that specific area?
It's pretty specific in that neighborhood, yeah.
That area, that one lot?
Not that one lot, just the Kentucky Hills neighborhood.
Okay. Alright, and what'd you call it, a federal what?
Opportunity zone.
Okay.
It's based off of latest census.
Okay.
It just was announced, it was announced about, what first came out back in April of twenty-eighteen. There was an article on it recent, within the past month.
Okay, alright. He was saying that it's called a federal opportunity zone. He said it's based off the current census, which, I don't know if that was twenty-ten or when. And, I don't know all about it, but apparently the Kentucky Hills subdivision was designated as one of these areas, that's all he said. Hold on a second. I'm just saying that because people didn't hear it, I'm not gonna answer questions yet. Go ahead.
Opportunity zone is an economically distressed community where new investments under certain conditions may be eligible for preferred tax treatment. Localities qualify as opportunity zones if they have been nominated for that designation by the state, and that nomination has been certified by the US, by the Secretary of the US Treasury via his delegation of authority to the Internal Revenue Service.
That really cleared it up, thank you. I'm sorry, I, but thanks for sharing that, Tina. Okay, do you folks have anything else to say to us?
That's it, I'll wait for questions.
Okay, alright, well, thank you very much. I'm gonna open the public hearing portion. I do wanna say, though, that some folks have walked in and out of here, and I don't know that everybody was here when there was a swearing-in. And technically, you're supposed to be sworn in so that you can be held accountable for the things you say and do. So, if there's anyone else here who wasn't sworn in at the beginning that thinks they may want to speak or testify, they don't have to, but if they think they might, if they think the spirit might move them, they need to go ahead and be sworn in, so. Well, it doesn't hurt to do it twice if you're not sure you did it, so, just whoever's standing is gonna, alright. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer, I do. Okay, thank you, you may be seated if you have a seat to sit in. Okay, we'll go ahead and open for the- Okay, um, we'll go ahead and open for the, uh, folks that wanna speak in favor of this case. Now, the first, some people have already signed to speak, the first couple speakers, uh, I'll give them some leeway, but the next few speakers, we will have a three-minute time limit, now, I know three minutes doesn't sound like a lot, but what that does is that focuses your testimony to us about how you feel, so, and remember, if you just wanna simply agree with one of the speakers before, please say that that's what you are doing, if you have new information, please share that with us, but please, there's a, there's a three-minute limit. It's my discretion, if you're saying something very interesting, I may extend that, so, please be animated and smile and be kind to me, okay? So, the podium's open, who wishes to speak first? Okay, make sure you, I'll give your name and state your address for the record, and please be about that close to the microphone, okay?
Does that sound all right?
That sounds good, thank you.
My name's Seth Walker, I live three-five-zero-two North Pleasant Street. I bought a house off Pleasant Street about, mm, June of last year. I'll be quite frank, if I knew that there was apartment complexes moving not even a half a block down my street, I definitely would not have bought the house there, on top of that, the opportunity cost is, talking about section-eight housing, I definitely wouldn't have bought a house there if I knew section-eight apartments were getting ready to be built there. Not the fact that section-eight is bad, but they're notorious for having drug activity, they're notorious for having just all-around terrible living conditions. I'm twenty-two years old, I just bought a house, and I'm trying to raise a family, and that's the last thing I want in my neighborhood, so, that's all I have to say.
Let's, let's get this clear before we proceed. Can, can the applicant or the city staff tell me if they're section-eight?
We're, we're not, we're not aware of any.
Well, I don't think we are either, now, can it be section-eight later on? What, what?
Well, section-eight is a voucher system now, it can go to certain places that accepts the vouchers, but there's not really any designated section-eight housing, like there used to be.
Like there, so it's different than it used to be?
That is correct.
Okay, but I take your point, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We need to make this very clear.
Okay.
Section-eight housing is a legal process. There can be no actions taken in concert or unilaterally that is adverse to a tenant. And while this commission is obligated to hear and make decisions, we will do so in a civil manner consistent with federal, state, and local law. I am adverse to this language that I'm hearing, I am very uncomfortable with it, and I take strong exceptions to that, let's make that clear.
I think you have made that clear, it's not section-eight, it wouldn't matter if it was later on, but I just heard that stated, and I wanted to be sure that we started with something, because I didn't want to have everybody come up here and say that.
If I was informed wrong, I'm sorry, but most of the people that came knocking on my door asking for my signature on this proposal was, that was one of their selling points, and quite frankly, there's enough problems with parking on the street as well. Ninety percent of the houses have at least two to three cars parking on the street, I believe that that apartment complex would just add to that issue as well. On top of that, as you said, the sewage issue, I mean, that would also add to the added problem in the area as well. And knowing that those trees in the area are probably the worst in the whole neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, so, anybody else who wants to come in for they can, but we're not gonna say anything about section-eight, that is not under consideration, it's, if you were told that, it was, it was not in fact true, okay? And if you start talking like that, I'm gonna gavel you down, so.
Hi, um, my name's Robin Bruckner, and I live at three-zero-nine West Twenty-Eight Street, which is on the north side of the village.
Okay.
My question, which I'm surprised no one has brought up, is, on Liberty is Mill Creek Elementary School, which is already at capacity. Now, you're talking about adding, sorry, additional houses, additional homes, apartment complexes, and these teachers are already, their classrooms are already full, I understand they're either going to be or, or are in the process of busing the kids out to different schools, that's one issue. The other issue that I have is that I've lived in the neighborhood for over twenty years, and most of the people, and I, and I actually recently thought, you know what, I'm gonna think about selling my house, I just wanna see what it's worth. And it's amazing in that neighborhood that the houses are, go between sixty and ninety. And you're wanting to put a hundred and, you know, something thousand-dollar housing, I, I don't understand why they would put it there, uh, for one, and then, um, for two, over the years, many of the people that live there, I guess they keep their house, but then they rent it, and we get renters in our neighborhood on our side, and I, and I, it's, it never fails, when you get a renter in a neighborhood like that, built in the sixties, these houses are old, they don't care. And so, we've had a lot of complaints, we've had, you know, debris, they don't get trash service, there's been a lot of problems, so, from a standpoint of being a longtime resident, I want my val, the value of my property to stay where it's at, or increase and go better. I think rental property is a mistake, and then there's the school issue, which I think is a big issue, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else who would like to testify?
Hello, my name is Candace Curry, and I live at four-oh-two West Marcia Avenue, and I've only lived there for three years, and I want it to be a nice little neighborhood, it is a great neighborhood, I mean, we seem to all get along, we mind our business, we do what we need to do, we try and take care of our homes, and kids play in that area. I mean, the kids have a ball in that area, and I just don't see having all these other people and cramming all these many people into that little area, how that's gonna help anything in our neighborhood, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Make sure you state your name and-
Good evening.
Hello?
My name is Lance Stout, uh, I'm Deputy Superintendent for the Independent School District, and our address, my address, is two-oh-one North Forest. Um, I'm joined with Salum Stutzer, and he'll speak in just a minute, we'll be very brief, appreciate this opportunity, but first and foremost, we're opposed, uh, to this proposition. Um, as it was just mentioned, Mill Creek Elementary School is at capacity, as a matter of fact, we are having to currently bus a few students to Glendale Elementary School, so, uh, that's a concern of ours. Salum's gonna talk a little bit more about transportation, but if you've ever driven, uh, there in the afternoon or in the morning, you're gonna see a long line of patrons there, dropping off their children and picking them up, so certainly that's a concern as well. Uh, my last talking point's already been addressed, I'll be very brief, just don't see this, um, as a good fit as this is a residential neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, my name is Salum Stutzer, address is two-oh-one North Forest, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-zero. Um, a couple of points have already been made, um, one of the concerns that we have in terms of opposing this particular development is, whatever, in school business, high-density housing tends to always bring down property values. Obviously, most of the folks in here know how we're funded, you know, we're funded through the state, but we also have local funding, uh, through assessed evaluation. So, that's a big concern, 'cause that's gonna put a strain on those resources due to the lower property values of the surrounding homes. The other piece is, there's just really no good pathways, uh, I think, you know, we work with the city on, on numerous different projects, obviously, as you guys know, we're building Castle Park, and one of the, uh, requirements that the city had asked of us is to do a few public improvements to create some arteries that lead into the neighborhoods, whether it's sidewalks, those types of things. We simply don't have that over there, now, we've done some improvements, I think we've done some overlays, but the challenge that we'd have if this particular project is, goes forward, is it's, it's gonna compound our traffic issue. Uh, and it's, it's a residential neighborhood, we have kids that navigate that, uh, as it is in its current state, we don't have sidewalks in a couple of areas, so, concerned about the safety, um, we run two-hundred and something bus routes in this particular district, uh, it, it affects our operations in terms of how we schedule those buses, they don't just run, run one route, so, the, the couple of buses that Dr. Stout talked about may pick up some kids on the neighborhood on that part of town, drop them off at Mill Creek, then they have another bus route to run, so by adding and compounding the traffic, that obviously affects that schedule, which changes school start times, which changes bus operations, so, uh, we strongly oppose this particular, uh, development, it'll put a undue burden, uh, in terms of the resources, uh, the school district has, and also just general operations for that side of town.
Thank you very much.
Uh, my name's Kenny Juffers, I live at three-zero-three Colonel Drive, uh, I've lived there about nine years. Uh, but on that, uh, my father lived on Osage, at thirty-three-oh-three North Osage, he bought the house in fifty-seven, when he bought his house, there were only three model homes in the neighborhood. That whole area was supposed to be a community center, with swimming pool, um, baseball diamond, a basketball court, tennis court, and in the building was supposed to be a community center for ping-pong, uh, jacks, uh, little kids could go in there and play without getting hurt, and I don't know really when that failed, but I never remember it being open to the community. Uh, we did play basketball, we did play tennis, we did play baseball. I, I just can't imagine looking across the bay window that I have and see, uh, big apartments. The only thing that I would go for, that I would say yes to, are individual homes that are built there that resemble the ones that we already have, that's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Clyde Clark, my address is thirty-three-oh-six North Delaware Street. So, I'm, uh, thirty years old, I purchased my house off of Delaware back in October of two thousand seventeen. Um, I've seen the market rise just in the last year and a half since I purchased my house. Already, like, that neighborhood's quality is continuing to rise, neighbor, neighbors are starting to take pride in their neighborhood, we still have issues, the houses that we continually have issues with are the ones that are rental properties, that are corporate-owned, rented out. I live right next door to one, the lawn all summer long was over a foot and a half long, it never got addressed, they mowed the front finally, I actually mowed the front with my rider, the back got over four feet long before the city got onto him, and they finally paid somebody. Anytime I've tried to reach the con, the contact for that property, they take days to respond to me, they don't address it, they don't get it fixed, they say they would, the lawn's still not mowed, it's just laid down because of winter, so, that's the first part with rental properties. Onto this property, when we addressed, when you mentioned about like the forty percent rule in the front, then this gentleman says, "That's, only applies to single-family homes," because he's selling this as a multiple family, but then in that same sentence, he's going back and forth to, "But these are single-family homes." And then in another sentence, he sells as a multifamily, to me, what this feels like is they don't know what they're doing, they just wanna build it, get approval, and when they build these houses and try to sell them for a hundred and fifteen thousand, when the market in there is ninety, and they don't sell, they're gonna become the next rental in the neighborhood, and they don't match anything in the neighborhood, and they're the next to decline, because rental properties, people don't have pride of ownership. I sell insurance for a living, number-one claim on homeowners, that's why people have to have landlord policies instead of homeowners, because tenants are higher-risk, they do not appreciate the home, because they don't have pride of ownership. The last thing I want is another apartment complex in a neighborhood that I purchased a year and a half ago as a single-family home to start my family and to start my journey in ownership, I don't want it, and I don't think anybody else in the neighborhood wants it.
Hi, I'm Versina Brown Cootie, I live at thirty-six-oh-nine North Pleasant, right up the street from where the church is. The problem I have, I've been there a year and a half, I'm new to this area, I lived in Platte County, but I see a lot of children, and the children are playing in the street, and there is a lot of cars parked on each side of the street, so the passage is narrow, and the church has been down there vacant for, since I've been here. But what I would like to see is a beautiful, nice little park where all the children can go down to the park, and that they can play down there and not be in the street, there has been numerous times where I have hollered at children because people are going through there so fast, they don't even stop at the stop signs, and children have almost been hit. So, it would be nice to have an area in a community where all the children can go play and be safe. Not only that, if they don't want to do that, it would be nice to have our elderly residents put in a single-family dwell, we live in the houses where there's mostly ranch housing, you know, there's no two-stories there usually, it's all ranches. And I bought my house for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I paid cash for the house, so, uh, I haven't lived there that long, but I see a lot of things going on in our neighborhood, but it is a friendly neighborhood, it is a family neighborhood, and we would like to keep it that way, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Graham, I live at twenty-nine-twelve McComas Lane in Kentucky Hills, six-four-oh-five-oh. My wife and I have lived in our property for forty years, uh, and we have, we modeled this, uh, house inside and out, added decks, we maintain this property, uh, we like the neighborhood, it's a lovely neighborhood, and I hear the gentleman say that, a couple of occasions, who's proposing this project, that he doesn't know, he doesn't know what the impact is gonna be, he doesn't understand, uh, he didn't think about the, the impact on the school, he didn't think about the impact on the traffic, he thinks that, he thinks that part of the problem can be offset by eliminating on-street parking. Well, that's the entire problem here, it's like, on-street parking is something that we enjoy having in our neighborhood, he's, he seems to think that that's a solution, and it's not, it's, it's a reiteration of the problem. Now, it makes me wonder what else the gentleman hasn't thought of yet, yet he hasn't come prepared to sell this project, he didn't talk to any of us.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Tracy Wheaton, twenty-four-twenty-one North Yocum Road, Independence, Missouri, and I oppose this. This is a single-family residential area, and it does not support multifamily housing, whether it's sold or rented, either one, the area doesn't support it, the schools don't support it, and definitely the sewers don't support it, thank you.
Hello.
Hello, make sure you talk into the microphone.
Okay, my name's Jana Evans, I live at thirty-four-oh-three North Delaware, and I am a homeowner. I grew up in the neighborhood, my parents are original homeowners, they still reside in the neighborhood. And I have a couple of things for you, if I can give them to you, I have a- Also, a petition of the properties within 185 feet of this proposed development. It's supposed to have 30% or more. I've got 50%. Of course, you have to take into consideration that there are rental properties, and those folks are not easy to track down the owners of the property. And out of 579 homes in Kentucky Hills, 364 people signed that they do not want this in our neighborhood. So, I will...
Okay. Thank you.
And I also have some questions about how we got to where we are. And so, I've got this put together for you all, too. In my parents' paperwork, when they bought their home, and my mom keeps everything, there were covenants and restrictions on the land. And I've got a copy for you all. And in this, let me put my glasses on. Just briefly, it says Declaration of Restrictions, September 27, 1957. Okay. Okay, it says, "All lots in any and every subdivision of the whole or any portion or portions of said real estate shall be known and described as residential lots, except Lot 1, which shall be used for commercial purposes." That's where the old gas station used to be, there at Liberty. Okay? Lot 97, which is the lot in question, shall be used for a recreational and club area, and such other lots as are specifically excluded in areas subsequently platted. Okay? That the restrictions run with the land, and that there has to be a vote of the majority of the property owners at the time of any changes that were going to be made. And I am here to tell you that we would like a paper trail, because nobody seems to know anything about at what point in time this changed hands. I can tell you that the original developer passed this off to the RLDS Church, and then they passed it off to Solid Rock, who subsequently replatted this. So, technically, today, it's no longer a part of Kentucky Hills, it's its own little entity. But, interesting enough to me, there was an emergency ordinance that was passed that made this happen. And I've got copies of that as well. And I cannot find anywhere where this was ever zoned commercial. I can't find anywhere where the covenants were ever voted out. And nobody that I can find was ever told anything about changing of hands or changing of plat, given an opportunity to voice their opinion. And so, my question is that we need an answer. What happened to our property? These people that are here are all from Kentucky Hills, they all own homes. What happened to our property? Ever since I was a kid and beyond, before that, this was a common ground. That's what the restrictions and covenants state that it was supposed to be for recreational use for the neighborhood. So, how did we get here? But I have the paperwork that I'm going to give to you that I have found, as well as some pictures of the flooding down in the area at Colonel Drive and Pleasant. And I just wanted to say, I heard the word "opportunity" mentioned initially, and I have found that the word "opportunity" can be a good thing, and it can be a very bad thing. And that's kind of how I feel about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? You might as well queue up if you...
Paula Frazi, 3201 North Union Street, Independence, Missouri. I will ditto the eloquent speeches other people have made, but I have a little insight as a former PTA president at the elementary school, at the junior high, at the high school, and a member of the Independence Council of PTAs. And it, when we moved there in 1979, I, you know, we kind of met the neighbors right around us. But as our children entered school, I started to realize what a unique neighborhood this was. And I was from a very similar World War II development. And this, it functions more like a little village. For years, there was, I wasn't there at the gas station time, but there was a small grocery store. So, it was like a little village. You ran into everybody everywhere, at the school, at the grocery store, you know, people babysat for each other. And there are many multi-generational families, as you've heard tonight. On our street alone, I can think of five sets of grandparents', children', and grandchildren in homes on the same street or neighboring blocks. And our son, for a time, lived there, too. So, I was glad to hear you say that about it changing the character of the neighborhood, having a multifamily housing unit go in. And I just wanted to reiterate that it would bring a big difference, because as people move in one family at a time and are incorporated into our little village, they take on the ways. They look out for each other's kids, they get to know each other, and I would hate to see that lost.
Thank you.
Evelyn Bray, 500 Colonel Drive, Independence, Missouri, 64050.
Okay.
I agree with everything that's been said here tonight in opposition of the plan. This doesn't fit in the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. Two things that I have questions that haven't been addressed yet is Isosceles has been a poor neighbor so far. One thing is the tree issue. They do mow, I got to give them that, but they don't take care of the branches. The city had to remove part of one of the trees in their landscaping plan this summer because it blocked the road. The tree is dead, and it's in the landscaping plan. And my tax dollars went to pay for the removal of it. The second is, I have a problem with the two-story plan. It doesn't fit. It would, there's no buffer between the apartments and the housing. I live right across the street on, I'm on the current, the corner of Colonel and Pleasant. I would not have sunlight in my house. I would have people looking down in my bedroom windows from across the street. The other issue I have is that the apartments are too close to Colonel Drive on Colonel and Pleasant, because even though they may be in building codes or whatever, the road curves slightly on both Colonel and Pleasant, and it makes a dangerous corner. There have been accidents there because it's, it tends to be kind of a blind spot, even with a wide-open area. When you put a two-story house, what, 20, is it 25 feet away? It's going to cause a blind corner, which is, and there is a lot of traffic on Colonel Drive. And Pleasant is the only other exit to the subdivision besides Colonel Drive that's a I just reiterate that this is not a good fit for our neighborhood. We were not consulted on any of the other changes. I've lived there since 1977, and my house has gone up in value, and I'd like to continue that. I don't want to see my property go down in value because there's a huge apartment complex across the street. And I've seen the sewers backing up over there on that property. There's an issue already with water there. I've seen sewer fountains coming out of the ground in heavy rains. They block and make all that cement, and it will be a bigger problem on runoff. Also, I'd like to see sidewalks. There were no sidewalks in this plan for the children. Right now, there are some trees there that the kids navigate. They don't go across the street to use the sidewalks, because they would have to cross the street twice. That's the only area that doesn't have a sidewalk for them to use. And then there's also the issue of traffic and parking, which I think have already been addressed.
Okay. Your time's up.
Thank you.
My name is Brant Whitebread, 507 Marcia. I want to thank you for taking the extra time with us this evening. I know it's, you know, quite a large crowd. I want to thank the staff for also making their recommendation as well. I think that's very important, that they get the facts right. There's some conflicting things that I'm hearing, and I don't want to repeat everything that's been said. Isosceles really seems to be focused on themselves, not the community, and that's obvious. The Section 14501, 10B, I think is a good point in terms of the parking. There are not enough, there's not enough space, quite frankly. Even if you doze things down and replat, there's not enough parking to handle that. And in terms of the traffic, I don't think Sean took the time to look at the traffic. I mean, you've heard from the superintendent, you've heard from the traffic as well. So, I think these are real issues. My mother has lived there since 1966. I grew up there. I come there a lot. We spend a lot of time together. I think there's a lot of other issues in this application that was pointed out. Fourplex, eightplex, duplex. I've heard the term apartment. Really, quite frankly, I don't know what is being built or proposed. So, if the application says eightplex, then I have to only assume it's an eightplex. So, I don't know how you label that. Okay? I know the pictures show duplexes, but I don't think they're single-family attached or detached. So, I've heard eightplex.
Could city staff just state that again, what they're actually proposing?
The applicant had shown on their plan a myriad of different ones for each of the seven lots, from twoplexes to fourplexes to eightplexes and a sixplex.
Right.
So...
Okay.
All of them, actually.
And the total number of units, again, was...
Thirty-four, at my count.
Yeah, it was 38.
Thirty-eight.
Okay.
So, you do the multiplier, obviously, who lives in those would be, you know, at least times four.
So, they're all townhomes, by the way. They're not apartments, but they're rental units with, with one ownership for the entire building of each building.
Okay.
So, I think that's an issue. I think the superintendent made a good point. I'm not going to belabor any of that. I appreciate you taking this under advisement from many of the folks I've seen here for years. You'll notice that there's a lot of older community here. We spend a lot of time investing in our homes. We spend a lot of time with our Home Depots and our Loews. We're bringing our houses up. To say economic stress, I really don't know what that means. The city finds us of value. They've come out and repaved, they're fixing sidewalks, they're putting in better corners for handicap. I mean, it's a really nice community. If you haven't been there, you know, it's certainly a place for you to come look at. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
I live at 403 West Colonel Drive. I'm opposed to this project. I worked for the City of Independence in their Water Pollution Control Department for 27 years, six months, and one day. And working for their sewer department, I'm very familiar with this area. And I believe the sewer lines, sanitary sewer lines, are at capacity on a good day. And any day it rains, they flood. They flood into people's houses, and they overflow into the environment. So, this project is not a good thing for anybody. I've seen that property, the lower part of that property to the south of the building, completely underwater from overland flooding. Some issues have been addressed, and some of that has been fixed. But the sanitary flooding continues to be a problem for a lot of the neighborhood. There is a spring on the property, and it constantly runs. Is there any plans for where that water is going to go so it doesn't flood additionally across yards and properties? This project is not a good fit for the neighborhood. Developer mentioned at one point that they thought it would fit being two-story, because there are other two-story houses in the neighborhood. There are not two-story houses in the neighborhood. There are raised ranches, some raised ranches. But there is no two-story houses in the neighborhood. So, I'm opposed to this.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Let's see if this adjusts low enough that you can hear me.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I'm Lori Wilson. I live at 3608 North Osage with my husband and our three kids. And I'll be very brief and not say anything that anybody else has said, although I agree with them. I looked up opportunity zones, because I wanted to know what that meant, because, hey, that sounded like maybe that was something good for our neighborhood. It's a tax incentive for investors to reinvest. So, they're getting a tax incentive, and we're getting them getting a tax incentive, which, again, doesn't help our school or community in any way. We've given you a lot of problems, and I wanted to give a solution, because they said they tried to deed the property to a daycare, to some other church groups. We would have loved the opportunity as a neighborhood to have purchased the land, to have been deeded the land, and still would keep that option on the table. And I know we're not supposed to speak to them, but that's something that was never, never given to us, and we would like that opportunity, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Kay Soudard, I own 305 Colonel Drive. I won't go back over everything, because I agree with most everything. One thing I want to point out, if I understood their plan, they're going to build on seven different lots, turn that into seven different lots, and they could sell sections of that. So, really, what you're talking about is seven landlords, potentially. And if one's hard to manage, seven's harder. And if you look around, Blue Springs has got some properties where they built duplexes, then they sold... then they sold sets of duplexes to different landlords. It is a holy mess. Because one landlord might be trying to keep people under control. The next guy doesn't care at all. So if you're going to do something, don't get yourself seven landlords. So...
I am Bob McDermott, and I think everybody here knows me. I've been... Had a moving company here in Independence for 61 years. And I've seen this city grow. And I don't think we need this project. And I understand the school district. I'm glad they came and told us what we needed to know. And I'm glad the sewer man came and told us what we need to know. Because the sewer is pumped down to Liberty, North Liberty, and then it is pumped back up Colonel Drive over the hill. And this is the problem we've had for 61 years that I've lived in Kentucky Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like... You want... Yeah, come on up.
One more moment. I've lived here in Kentucky Hills since I was four years old. My great aunt and uncle have lived there. My dad helped my great aunt and uncle move in. It's a family neighborhood, as we've all said. And this would be a great opportunity since we've already proven that this is not a practical situation. What about doing an emergency hearing now and changing it back to single-family zoning?
Too big nose.
It's very clear that Isosolees has not planned for the neighborhood. I lived in their condos in Lee's Summit. Let me tell you, it was a nightmare. I bought for $117,000 and couldn't sell it for $50,000. Parking was a disaster, and it was a poor-quality home. There is nothing that this neighborhood won't do to save their hood, and they've worked really hard at it. Unfortunately, there are several abandoned houses here. I've seen evictions on a weekly and monthly basis in this neighborhood. There's boarded-up houses. Give this place an opportunity to build something that'll work. If Isosolees is going to do it, make them put something appropriate for the property. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did you... We didn't get your name.
Raynut Hannah, 602 West 37th.
Okay, thank you. All right. Last call. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to take this time to make sure, because I wasn't very clear. I didn't... People who were in favor of this were supposed to speak first. Not that there's anybody here... But there might be. So I'm giving that person the opportunity to speak if they are here. Okay. Well, everybody's had the opportunity to speak. We're going to close the public hearing portion of this... Yeah? If I can close the public hearing portion, can't I? Apparently, I can't do that. Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and give a rebuttal?
He's over here.
Oh, sorry. And again, if you could speak into the microphone so everybody could hear you.
So I'd just like to touch a couple of high spots. You know, that was a lot to remember. I was trying to take notes as I went along. So one common... One common subject was green space. And we've heard that from a couple people, and we're okay with that. And we do have a revised plan that does have the bottom half is green space. And we could possibly build a park there or donate it to the... And donate it to the Independence Parks or the city or whoever, you know, would want that. That's a total possibility. We're okay with that. The other thing I'd like to address was the... Some of the petitions. And I feel like some of those were signed under false pretenses, and that's blockbusting, and that's a fair housing violation, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And the other one is parking. I'd like to address parking. You know, I got laughed at when they said, you know, maybe they shouldn't park on the street. And with a lot of other... With a lot of other complexes like this, you have one-car garage space and room for, you know, probably two cars in the driveway comfortably. And I'd just like to say, you know, no parking is allowed in my neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood. It works out real well. Let's see here. And then, you know, I hear a lot about the sewer line overflow, but is it the sanitary or is it the rain? It sounds like it's a rainwater issue. And, you know, that could be a lot of... There could be a lot of different factors causing that. But I don't see this... You know, with the retention pawn in that revised plan, I could only see that as helping. And doing nothing is definitely, you know, going to be doing nothing. So, you'd like to add a few things?
I guess the one thing that I would have, based off of everything that I've heard, just curious... My understanding, there was these restrictions and covenants that the lady mentioned. I believe that is attached to the original HOA that was associated with the neighborhood. And I think it's great that you see this neighborhood really being active here because somebody came in to do something with this... Do something with this property. But when the property was sitting idle and has been for sale, you know, they could put the HOA back together and acquire that open space for themselves.
And the property has been for sale for the last three years.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I, you know... I think that pretty much touches, you know, all the ones we're touching.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, commissioners. Do you have questions of staff or comments that you would like to make? This is your moment. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I've closed the public hearing portion. Or I am going to. I apologize, but you've already spoken. But I'll allow you to bring a brief point if you want to make a brief point.
I want to answer the question about the flooding issue he was talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I'm talking about sanitary sewer flooding and storm sewer flooding.
Both.
Both.
All right.
And that property has groundwater flooding on it.
Yes, I remember you talking about the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. So now it's closed. Okay. Commissioners like to make a statement? Have questions?
I'd make a motion that case number 19-810-01, the preliminary development plan for 3206 North Spring Street, be approved.
Okay. Wait. Don't. Please. If this is your first time here, you're surprised. But other than that, please, let's keep it simple. Does there are a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded?
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Goldsberry?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
No.
Chairman Ashbaugh?
No.
Now, since I'm chairman and I get to say what I want, I'm going to say it. I like that all you folks are together and you came together. And I'm glad to hear that you really value your neighborhood. So I would encourage you to continue to do this. And if you want to take care of this place, make the gentleman offer or give him suggestions. But I'll tell you, if you don't do anything, something else is going to come up, and it's going to happen again and again and again. So please use this newfound togetherness you have to do something positive with it, was my hope. Okay? All right. So we've got to say this. Case number 19-810-01 PUD, preliminary development grant at 3206 North Spring Street has been... not been approved. With all the recommendations that have not been approved. Okay, moving along to whatever's next. Approval of minutes. Does anybody have changes?
Motion to approve.
Well, we don't entertain motions to be approved. The minutes will stand as written. You heard me? Okay. And I'm going to assume that there's really nothing you're going to tell us right this moment, right?